Let me call this meeting to order. It's the agenda of the regular meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It's Wednesday, May 12th, 2015, and it's 6:00 PM.
Hi, Mayor. It's the 13th. May 13th.
I'm sorry, May 15th. We're at 101 South Washington Street. Rio Grande City, Texas. I'll ask Mr. Ramirez to lead us in an invocation and Mr. Jones and the President.
Our heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct business for the city and guide our hearts and our minds in spirit of fairness, bright thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our first may reach a successful conclusion. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with due opportunity, just as for all. I declare the Texas side. The State of Texas. State under God, one indivisible. Thank you for the minutes. Does Ali Gilia will copy? I don't know. Come on.
I'm sorry. Pardon?
Rule call.
Rule call, yes. Mayor Cortez Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a form, sir.
Did anybody sign up for a public form?
No, sir.
We'll go to a reading of a proclamation declaring May as Historic Preservation Month, and that is in 1D. And it reads Historical Preservation Month, whereas Rio Grande City is one of the most historic communities in Texas with more than 600 historical properties, and whereas Rio Grande City has been recognized in regional, state, and national print, radio, and television programs for its significant historical richness, and whereas Rio Grande City is a certified local government by the Texas Historical Commission, and whereas Rio Grande City has been nationally recognized as a national Main Street community for 10 consecutive years, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community charter while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now therefore, I, Ranar Garza, the third mayor, on behalf of the City Commission, do proclaim May 2015 as Historic Preservation Month in Rio Grande City and call upon our families, businesses, and residents to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Witness my hand and seal of the city of Rio Grande City. This is the 13th day of May 2015. Do we have anybody to be speaking on behalf of Historic Preservation Month?
No, sir. We, the city and the EDC actively participates in maintaining our historic architecture for the city through ordinances and through the Main Street program. So historical preservation is very big for our city.
Very well. Anything else?
That's it, sir.
We'll go on to 1E, departmental reports. Ms. Z.
Mayor, Commissioners, on departmental reports, I do want to highlight all departments for we had a very good opportunity to have an exercise in emergency management through the rainstorms we had Monday night. And I do want to give thanks to every department working in an efficient and coordinated manner. Special thanks to PD, Fire Department. They were at the scene throughout the night. And also to, I want to give thanks to Manuel, who I don't know how many hours he was awake. Manuel, I hope you want to give us just a real site update because we are still monitoring the situation. So he's the, he was our emergency management coordinator for this past two days and continues right now monitoring the rains in Mexico and then that are coming up north.
Very well.
My head.
Well, yeah, so far right now, the park and that is really some work. They raise this point, but the river right now knows as part of abnormal, they need to estimate any increase yet. Yeah, the water has gone down a little bit from the streets, so it's a good, there, we don't expect any much rain today anymore. Tomorrow, they say there's another chance, a good chance of heavy rains like in the storms. But, you know.
How many families or people were displaced in their homes?
Well, officially, nobody was displaced because nobody asked for shelters. There were family members, there were 20 homes that were reported and was canvassed. They, there's some people they need, but there's some relatives. So we asked by displacement, by the relatives. Obviously, the majority of them, yes, would gripe enough, but some, I don't know, change. As far as, totally wise, nobody requested help.
Within the city limits, right? Outside the city limits, we have some.
Yes, outside the city, we need to count on that, but there was a lot more outside the city.
Yeah.
Just purely on the side of city limits. But our count is from the city.
With the city.
I'd like, you know, just to congratulate you all. Basically, the, I saw throughout the city, you know, that our drainage system worked for six inches of rain, you know, it's, we did a lot, it worked real, real well. So I can, I guys have been doing an excellent job, you know, Public Works and everything, everything clearing of what this type of weather when it.
Everybody was called, called in, you know, they had a question.
It's very hard to fight against Mother Nature when it comes, but I know that there was some affected families. But I do want to mention also that the day before yesterday, as I attended both meetings with you all and the planning of the city and the participation, not only of one or two departments, but of every single department. I mean, I, it was, I congratulate you all also and knowing being in touch with me all night long, letting me know what was going on. So that was, that was very well coordinated and again, we're not, we're not out of the woods yet. We still have some weather, I believe, till Saturday.
Yes, I've been getting brief rest, but yes, water's still going.
Everybody's standing by and a shelter is in place if needed.
Needed, yes.
So, very well done.
Do we have a location of the shelters? Can we announce it, yeah, to the public?
It's been announced and it's, I heard about this church with a pastor.
Bob.
Yes, and he's ready to go. If there's just one individual, he's ready to come in. He's just waiting for us to notify.
Very well.
Sandbags are still being given out. After 5:00, they contact the Fire Department, and during the day, they can contact the parks or Public Works. But we are still.
They have them at the 14 acres?
Yes, sir.
But, and the Indians, we have one at the Fire Department. This morning, we ran out, so we started making more. Currently, we have a lot stashed at the Fire Department.
How many sandbags have we given out?
Yesterday, well, yesterday, we were up to 240 bags out. And then today, I don't have a count for today, but I know for that, there's at least, I was above 20 families that had come into the bags.
And we do, we do still have quite a bit.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Very well. Anything else?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Jones, anything else? Thank you. Job well done. Let's go to number 2A, approval of departmental travel requests. Ms. Z.
Sir, we have several members, several employees from different departments going to training at the Police Department and the mandatory Boys and Girls Training also. We do have administration attending the TML Regional Workshop, and planning is going after the training for the onsite sewage inspections. Those are the trainings for the month of May.
Any questions?
Passable.
Second. Motion by the Secretary of Transit, second by Mr. Jones, all in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same time. Motion carries. We'll to be, approval of EDC action for meeting of May 5th, 2015. Ms. Z.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, in your packet, you have a memo from Executive Director for the EDC, Mr. Arindha Ghian, where they took action on the resignation of one of the EDC board members. There is a slot open, and it is up for your all's appointment. There is no official recommendation from the EDC Board. It is up to your pleasure, whoever you want to appoint at this time.
Is there an item for that appointment later on, on this agenda?
This is the, this would be.
So, yeah.
At the end.
Just, this is for, on the consent agenda.
Let's just give her the action.
Okay. Yeah, this item, item 7, 7X and 7B?
Yeah. They also took action on approving the EDA grant application, and those were the items taking action on.
Consent the action on the, on the EDA, on the EDC.
What are the wishes on the board on this item?
Passable, Mayor.
Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the poll, same. Motion carries. We'll go to 3A, and it's the first reading and approval of ordinance number 2015-4, amending Chapter 16, Article 16, Section 16-205, Drainage to Fire.
Damage.
Damage to, to fire hydrant, utility line, et cetera, to include the act of tampering with a water meter as an offense of this article, and adding Section 16-211, providing for violation of this article. Ms. Z.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, this ordinance will amend the language that we had in our previous ordinance where the wording was kind of ambiguous, and to this point, this new amendment would include any type of damage, and you'll see it there in your, on your section, the proposed ordinance, any tampering, any, you know, messing around with the, with the meters. This past meter reading session, we had another rash of magnets and illegal tapping into water lines. This orders will simplify the process for municipal court in order to assess a fine and not have to go through further higher action for, action from a higher court.
So what are the Water Department doing when we're finding this magnets on these meters? Are we locking those meters, or are we just removing the magnets? What are we doing this time?
The, at the, when the magnet is found, they're taking a picture, they are removed, a police report is done, and the process starts for the due process of giving them a citation and bringing them before municipal court. The meter is not removed since they are paying some form of amount on the water bill, but we do go forward with the municipal court action. Part of this, the second part of the ordinance, 16-211, this is what gives a tool to the municipal judge to find them, and it's $500 on the first offense. If it continues, the meter is removed, and every incident is another citation and another case for another $500, up to 500.
Is there, is there any way of collecting the water loss?
To do that, we would have to move into another type of, of charge, which would be theft, and that would have to go to JP Court.
Very well. And this is for that reason that I did see some photographs of some illegal taps and some.
Magnets.
Magnets. Some are pretty impressive.
Yeah, we, we, this is, yeah, this is the most, you know, comprehensive and, and approach to start tackling this on a more simplified process because we do have bonds and debt against this water utility department, and the ratings are based on that, so we need to take care of it there.
I, I saw, I saw a photograph of one meter that had about 10, 12 magnets on one side, back to back, and 10, 12 magnets on the other side, and then they covered it up with, with dirt. And what happened was, I think that they were trying to find the water meter, and they stuck that running there, and it stayed stuck, so.
That's something.
Very well. What are your wishes on that?
Passable.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ramirez, and a second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the poll, same time. Motion carries. We've got our resolutions. That'll be 4A, in a brief discussion and possible action to adopt resolution number 2015-14, providing an incentive to Big Sky Planes LP through the waiver of building construction and park fees for the proposed AD Unit Affordable Housing Development to be located at, on Eisenhower Road. Ms. Z.
Yes, sir. This is the second time this project is approached, but under a different developer. It is Tejas Housing Group. It is the same location on Chaco Blanco and Eisenhower. There are 80 units, two-story. This, I do want to say that this is not a Section 8 public housing. This is managed housing, and the investment would be substantial to the city, around 10 million. We do have a representative, Mr. Tim Lang, present, if you have questions. I also passed out this little folder with the information of, of different houses that they have. The building standards on this housing are nice. I mean, they have granite countertops, they have AC, they have swimming pools. It is gated, it is secured and lighted. I know that as.
Is it going to have its own recreational area besides the swimming pool?
Mr. Lang.
Yes, we, we are required, the tax code program to have a, mean a certain number of points for onsite amenities, and it's fluid, so we can change. Right now, I believe, aside from the pool, there would be a playground, and then we're going to have a onsite community building that will house the property manager, the maintenance staff, and the social services, and there would be some additional, you know, computer center, craft's room, full-service kitchen, different things like that for the residents to use for your charge.
There's affordable housing, meaning that the people that apply for housing here need to be making a certain amount of money per year?
That's correct.
How much is that?
60% of the area is median income and below.
Which is what, you know, your estimates?
Okay. Well, they can review, I mean, we go off the funds instantly, so instead of re-advent the bill, the tax code program just kind of piggybacks off of that. So let's say a, there's different levels, a 60% level, there's a 50% level, and a 30%. So that would be the percentage of the area median income that the person or family would earn. The median income for Rio Grande City is right around $52,000. So a four-person household at the 60% level would be about $31,500 maximum income. So $31,500 below would qualify for a 60% unit. And then you go down to 30% units, which we have just a few of those. Those are typically occupied by seniors or with someone with disabilities, some fixed income. A single person in a 30% unit would be earning at $11,000 and below. So the translation for rent on that would look like, for a 30% unit, one bedroom, $251 a month. We'll have two of those units in this particular building. And then we'd go up to a three-bedroom, two-bath, at a 60% level, would be a maximum of $743 a month.
These units are not furnished, or are they furnished?
They're not furnished.
They're not furnished.
Yeah. They will have.
Appliances.
Appliances.
Energy-efficient appliances, full-size washer grug hookups, so enough space for Lots of energy-efficient features, windows, like I mentioned, the appliances, ceiling and stuff.
Yeah, what number, like how many one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and two-bedrooms are going to be furnished here?
Yeah, one, two, and three bedrooms.
One, two, and three?
Yes.
The city, as before, approved waiving the construction fees as part of the points that are necessary for them to get funded. The other submission that you all approved the last time, which is Casalina next to Sanchez Elementary, the last word that we got, they're already, they've already got all their applicants, and they're looking at moving in at the end of this year.
At the end of this year?
Not, not this group.
Not this group.
Oh, it's Casalina.
Casa.
Yes, Casalina.
Casa.
At the end of the calendar year, December. So they're, they've already got their people in place.
Anything else to do? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Very well. Any others, sir?
No, sir. Just, it's a much-needed project for, as you heard, the rent fees are very, very affordable, and it's a very nice place secured.
I've got another can of motion.
I've got one more question. Where would these individuals go to apply for list up a housing? Who do they contact? One number? Who do they call, or where do they go?
We have a property management company that runs all of our properties. The first thing it will do is construct a flood house, so we will have pre-leasing done onsite.
Onsite, okay.
Yeah, through our.
Very good, thank you.
How's the water pressure on that side?
That's within the city limits.
So we're okay in that?
Yes, sir.
Passable. I have a motion. Second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the poll, same time. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to 4B, discussion and possible action to adopt resolution number 2015-15, authorizing staff to open a bank account for the deposit of grant funds to be received through Operation Stone Garden and to designate signatories for the same.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, we have been receiving Stone Garden funds for some time. I know Lieutenant Joey Solis has been on top of this project, of this grant. He gets all the reimbursements and all the paperwork in place, and in order to track it more efficiently, in order to get our reimbursements and for auditing, we are requesting a separate bank account in order to have those funds deposited directly. I know Mr. Solis is here to answer any of the questions. I know that we just recently got funded, and there'll be two fully equipped units. So we're ready to go with this.
Do you all want to add something to it?
Stone Garden, we've been working since 2008. Stone Garden is a federal-funded grant. We're also working Border Star, which is state-funded grant. We normally work both of them simultaneously throughout the year, so we do receive checks from both invoices. So I know David is having trouble separating and making sure all the money that we're getting invoiced is accounted for. 2015 grant for Operation Stone Garden, or sorry, 2014, we have, we received $249,900 and 900 and change. $113,000 of that will be for equipment to purchase two 2015 towers, fully equipped with cameras, radar, everything paid for by this grant. The rest will be directed for overtime. So, very well.
You've already submitted the 2015?
The 2015 grant, they changed it, it's a two-year grant. Normally, this year, it's a three-year grant. We're asking for a little bit over $475,000 for three years. Each, each year will be divided within those $475,000. We're also asking for about $30,000 for equipment to purchase infrared. We do go out a lot while operation on our, on the bicycle units, down to the riverbanks, patrolling especially behind Lax and Walmer, that range, so a lot of the times, we're out there on our bikes in pitch black. So I have Border Patrol who takes care of Stone Garden and advises us to put in, ask you for that equipment, who still pay for themselves.
The money is in form of reimbursement, or is it a grant?
It's a, it's a grant, but we reimburse.
Yeah, so we pay for the front, and then we get reimbursed for these expenses.
Most of the grants, most of the invoices run by patrons. Right now, we're doing Operation Border Star. What I'm doing with that one is every month, I'll send both invoices out. So the quicker we get them out, the quicker we get reimbursed. They're normally taking about 90 days to reimburse.
This is strictly city police, or are we also working cooperation with the county?
Operation Stone Garden goes through all the sheriff's offices. So we put in our budget to the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office, once they get allocated the money, they send it out to us, La Ruias Juarez, and Obama P.
I see. Motion.
Yes, sir.
Second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the poll, same time. Motion carries. We'll foresee discussion and possible action to adopt resolution number 2015-16, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration in the amount of $1.6 million for assistance with drainage improvements to the Arroyo Los Olmos. Ms. Z.
Yes, sir. We, the city has been approached by the development in front of Walmart. They currently have an application to FEMA for a conditional letter of map revision that would bring the area out of a flood zone. In doing so with this application, they're proposing to widen the channel of the Los Olmos and using that dirt as fill to bring up the site above the, yes, sir. They have requested that the city and EDC participate. We're looking at being co-applicant with the EDC Board. This is a 70-30, 70% grant and 30% matching. The amount of work that, that has been estimated is about 1.6. We're hoping to be able to include in that amount not only the construction, but any other soft costs such as testing, engineering, inspection, and any necessary soft costs associated with this. We did approach EDA, and I know that Ms. Ghian also made calls to EDA in Austin. They welcomed the application. It's been some time since they, they have funded a project, I think the last project with the elevated tower on Eisenhower. So this development promises to, to be quite an investment into the community and also create quite a number of jobs. We are still working with the developer, and Hollison Rutledge, our consultant for grants, has also been in communication with them to provide them the necessary documents in order to submit the application. The application is due June the 12th. We were hoping to submit a draft, a rough draft, so they could review it and let us know, you're missing this or that. But they're still working on this application with the, with the developer and providing the necessary documents. I do recommend that we at least make an attempt pending and that be contingent on the FEMA approval of this conditional letter map revision. If FEMA doesn't approve it, well then, everything changes as far as this development goes.
And all this is for the proposed development in front of Walmart?
Yes, sir.
If we were to get the 1.6 million, the 30% that the EDC is responsible for, how does that?
or pay application. But it's not a lump sum that you have to put in. It's as it, as it goes. You do have to commit eventually with the, a bank account and a resolution on the exact amount.
Hello, Antonio?
I say move it.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones.
I say move.
And a second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to four B, discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution number twenty fifteen dash seventeen, approving the appointment of election judges and other provisions for the June twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen special election. Mrs. Ayes.
I want to pass this on to Holly. She's been on top of the election process quite diligently, I would, I would say.
Yes, we have adopted our ordinance already, ordering the election, but then there are other items that we need to set out. You have to set out the, the election judges, who they will be, what they will be paying, the, the judges and the clerks. What kind of machines will we use, which will be the direct recording electronic machines? We're using the city's, I mean, the county's machines, which is the Iwatronic voting machine, and then the M one hundred, which is the bin that takes the paper ballots and counts them as they are. I think this works out very well in our last election. We had a result, I think, before nine-thirty or so when we were done. So we're hoping to have the same result this year.
And these are the two proposed names?
The names would be...
Francis Alina.
Yes.
They were our judges on election day last year. And then also, we have Raiza Cavello, who will be the early voting ballot board judge. And then David Sands as the central counting station judge.
Antonio?
Yes, sir. I think these are persons that had already basically worked with Holly in the past elections, except for David Sands.
Except for David. But, and really, as far as the central counting station, Mr. Rodriguez, John Rodriguez would be the tabulation supervisor. He's very familiar with these machines. He helped us last year. There's really not much at the central counting station except to put numbers on a graph and tally them. So that's what we'll be doing there.
Very well. I say move it. Second motion, Mr. Ramirez, a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to planning. Item A, discussion and possible action on request for mixed beverage and mixed beverage late hour permits by San Juan Sanchez for business located at six oh one East Main Street. This is there.
Yes, sir. This is a liquor license, a mixed beverage and mixed beverage late hours permits request by Ms. Juan Sanchez for the restaurant at Chase at La Borde. They are in the process of renovation and getting all their permits and licenses in order. PNC, just, I think it was last week that they voted on this, and they approved it.
Antonio?
Um, no, sir. Just that we welcome that Chase can be opened again. A lot of people requested, and it's a nice addition to the historic hotel.
I'll entertain a motion.
I say move.
Second. Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to planning. Item A, discussion and possible action on request for mixed beverage and mixed beverage late hours permits request by Ms. Juan Sanchez for the restaurant at Chase at La Borde.
They are in the process of renovation and getting all their permits and licenses in order. PNC, just, I think it was last week that they voted on this, and they approved it.
Antonio?
Um, no, sir. Just that we welcome that Chase can be opened again. A lot of people requested, and it's a nice addition to the historic hotel.
I'll entertain a motion.
I say move.
Second. Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to item B, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers' permit and retail dealers on permits late hours licensed by Edgar Solis and Juan Gilberto Escobar for business located at twenty-five forty-six Central Palm Drive Suite one oh seven. And there.
So this is off of FM thirty-one sixty-seven, where Antelitos and Citizen State Bank is located. This place used to be occupied by Fotosushi before, and now they're looking at a Cajun crawfish joint. I think they also presented to the EDC board. It's a good business. I think we don't have right now that type of cuisine in Rivendi City, so they are also looking at getting all their licensing and permits in place to start opening.
Mr. Ramirez, guys.
We will relay the message, sir.
With pleasure, board.
I say move.
I have a question, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary approval of the Meadow Three subdivision.
This is a residential subdivision. It is in the real water supply area. It is twenty-two lots, averaging point seventy-two acres each. This is the third phase. I know Mr. Gilbert Guerra is here. Is there a fourth phase, Mr. Guerra? This is the final phase? Everything is in order, and PNC has approved it, sir.
With pleasure, board.
I say move.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary approval of the Laredo Estates Phase One subdivision.
This is a subdivision that has both commercial and residential off of Embassy Street. As you go north of Dodia Street, near also Mesquite subdivision, there, the water is provided by El Tanque Water Supply. Sewer will be provided by Septic Tanks. There was an issue with access to Embassy ever since, you know, now that we have the new high school and a lot of traffic is traveling by, there were some restrictions on the access to Embassy. I know that the engineer is here, Mr. Milan is here as the plan director, and also Mr. Redali is here as planning and zoning chair. And I think that, that issue was taken care of by putting some plat notes specifying the limits on the, on the lots. We do have a sample or, or a copy of the plat that shows the access. Those are the ones that have been agreed by the developer's engineer and the city planning department.
Some proposals have been brought up and talked about already.
Yes, sir. And the developer and the ward is...
Very well. I say move.
I have a question. Are there any plans to fix the road there at Embassy?
Yes, sir. What they're going to do, they're dedicating additional fifteen feet on their side, because we're hoping that the ultimate width of Embassy will be sixty feet for by the way. It's currently thirty. They're dedicating fifteen on their side, so in the future, the fifteen on the other side will be dedicated for the full sixty. They're paying an additional ten feet on their side, so the road will be wider there. With regards to the other part of Embassy, if that's your question, it's... That contract with the ward is at Commissioner's Court on Monday.
Okay.
We've been waiting for contracts to be executed, and then the work will commence.
But the width of the road will not change as far as the other part of Embassy, right? Just, they're talking about just the property right in front of the...
The road was only available for a part additional by the way, which is would be necessary in order to widen. Those twenty, the twenty feet that exist will be resurfaced. Is that a question?
I do ask that the motion include a copy of this fact.
I was going to say, well, I, but the issue was solved by that, and it specified what?
Limited access to Embassy. And this would be the, the approved or the agreed access.
Basically, the agreement was to limit access to one entrance for every two lots. There originally were going to be nine entrances, now there are only four other than the streets.
One entrance for every two lots?
Yes.
So it should be thoroughly approved.
Yes, sir.
Will it be also for voluntary annexation?
Yes, that would be all right.
I'm sorry?
Voluntary annexation.
Yeah, those are on the, on the memo?
So we're pressing voluntary annexation at fine.
So plat note number sixteen is the revised access?
Plat note number sixteen that was recommended by the consulting engineer was to have no access whatsoever, but after some talks between the developer, the engineer, and planning department, this limited access was presented.
Adam, huh?
I think so.
It would be all the, on the final plat, it would be all through the final plat.
And, and it's also part of the construction. The construction plans will show the entrances, and they cannot proceed until it's corrected.
We'll have all those documents, the first person for final approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones. I say no. I have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to item E, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for final approval of the Sierra Base Free subdivision.
Yes, sir. This is the final Sierra subdivision next to low-water crossing that was done on its south road, where Mesquite Grill is. They have finished with all the construction of the streets, utilities, signage, retention area, planning and zoning, approved it, and all inspections are done.
How did that work out with this last ring?
The street worked like it should have. The water flowed. It was a low-water crossing, but there was no erosion due to the concrete and the side lines that had happened, so.
Mr. Guerra, the, the retaining pond that's directly across that street there, across the subdivision, are there any plans to enclose it, to put maybe a fence just for safety issues? Kids might want to go in there and jump or mess around, you know?
I think there is like a foot of water that was left after everything flows through, and it washed the sides, but there is already an agreement in place between the developer and the city to enclose it. The issue now is just how to shape the fence so we don't directly barrier for the tree to hang up against.
Okay, I see.
And that's between the developer and the developer, but no agreement in place for them to build the fence.
Thank you.
In fact, we came to speak to Mr. Milan and have confirmed the fence is going to get there.
And that's going to flow to its original natural flow, right?
It's the low spot. It's slowing down the excess water with the pavement that they provided, but they may...
Yeah.
...that contributed to the flow.
You said that right now, it's at about a foot of water only?
Right now.
After, after all the way that we got, or only kept one foot?
Well, everything flows through, and then water recedes, and the point where it holds a little bit of water zone. And it's not as deep as, it looks deep as the lower part, it's not really deep, it's just it's below the little level because it sits in the low spot.
This is final approval?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
I say move, ma'am.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to item M, discussion and possible action on request by SAM Engineering for preliminary approval of the Yerma subdivision?
Yes, sir. This is a replat, a replat of track lot number twenty-eight of Ranchito's El Norte. This is further from Ranchita Drive, behind, I think, where you live, towards that area, those lots. And they're getting lot twenty-eight and making eight lots out of it. You'll see the plat here as it's shown. All utilities are in place and paving, and they're basically creating more lots out of that track. I know there were some additional comments that you had, Gilbert?
Yes, sir. It'll leave them placed, the paving's in place, the street lighting in place, because it's pretty developed on the south side, there's no streetlights. Hydrant's in place, except for one for this development on the northwest corner along Los Apus. It meets the, the minimum spacing requirements for private potential subdivision. That was part of the comments, additional one hydrant.
These were like ranchettes, and now they're breaking them into smaller lots.
Where is that exactly, Mr. Guerra?
These lot, as you turn on, on...
Ranchita Drive.
This, this parcel is on the, I guess, on, on the northeast corner of El Mirador and Los Apus.
This pasture planning and zoning, and it has met our requirements for the elimination.
Any question?
I say move.
I have a motion, second by you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. Motion carries. We go to contracts and agreements. We go to item A, discussion and possible action to approve the system purchase agreement, radio systems with Motorola Solutions Inc. for a radio system designed by Motorola to be... Intro...
Interoperability.
Required, thank you. Required, as I said. A natural P twenty-five trunky eight-hundred, my favorite, single side digital radio subsystem connected to the McCullen radio system. What is it?
Yes, sir. This is the second part of our compliance with the state interoperability. I know Mr. David Champion with Motorola is here, and this agreement is basically having the Motorola put in the improvements at our tower shelter and at the dispatching. We finally have the list approved by the state. We got notified, I think, this earlier on Monday, probably. So we're good to go. We do have a grant for a hundred thousand of this. Mr. Champion is here to explain further on the communications between what we have now and what is being proposed.
Good evening, mayor. This is a municipal citizen's, I understand, have a bit of activity here in May tonight with a child, communications, we're covering a little bit, so we're trying, I mean, it's a radio shelter, we're currently working, this is under made, but never of us. I think it ties in well. So we're looking to enhance your system capabilities and address some of those issues. So what you have for you on the current agenda item is a system agreement. The purchasing that we're proposing is unmade under a cooperative agreement, it's called Houston-Gallston Area Council, and that's a council of elements, and it's a reduced buying structure that allows a very good discounting. So the system agreement is the first document, and I'm new council head, and I don't know if there's any peniation or not, but it's just a very standard terms and conditions system under HGAC that allows you to purchase and procure equipment under that system agreement. That's what that first agenda item provides, is approval to execute on that document as an entity that you are, a state entity, with the right to do that.
You do have in your agreement the scope of work, that which Motorola will do, and you also have the sites, and the time, and the amount. Motorola is the agency company that is in charge of the equipment we have right now.
And you reviewed the agreement?
Yes, mayor, and it's fine.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I say move.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones.
I'll send the motion.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those on the same side. The PD, have anything to add to it, or?
Yes, sir. We went down on communications at this forum, and we went down for about seventy hours. And this system would actually alleviate a lot of that issue because there's other contenders that are connected to it, and we just jumped to another one, and would not displaces are put as out of communication if we had this system in place. So it'll, it'll add to what we got already. Our area coverage would be all the way to Rambo, to, you know, so that, that... That's what that first agenda item requires, is approval to execute on that document as an entity that you are, a state entity, with the authority to do that.
You do have in your agreement the scope of work, that which Motorola will do, and you also have the sites and the time and the amount. Motorola is the agency company that is in charge of the equipment we have right now.
And you review the agreement?
Yes, mayor, and it's fine.
Do you have any question?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones.
I saw the motion.
Second by Mr. Ramirez, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. The PD, have anything to add to it or not?
Yes, sir. We went down on communications this morning, and we went down for about 70 hours. And this system would actually alleviate a lot of that issue because there's other antennas that are connected to it, and we just jumped to another one. Would not, the spaces would put us out of communication if we had this system in place. So it'll add to what we got already. Our area coverage would be all the way to Brownwood, you know, so that we don't have any cuts in mission, depending on weather. So this will improve the way we work a lot.
Did I call it to a woman?
Yes, you did, sir.
Very well. Motion passed?
Yes, it did.
We'll go to Item B. Discussion and possible action to approve the equipment lease purchase agreement on 23715 with Motorola Solutions, aim to finance the purchase of the Astro P25 radio system.
Yes, sir. Basically, to put this agreement that we just approved into place, we will need to finance that portion that is not funded by the grant. We did look at several financing from different financial institutions, and even Motorola, they're the ones who came up with the best deal that's beneficial to the city. So we think we got a real good deal, including that the first year, we will not have interest, we will not pay interest. So we are recommending that this, excuse me, council approve the lease purchase with Motorola to purchase the equipment, and we'll be complete with our budget, sir.
Any question? I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Ramirez, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We go to Item C, discussion and possible action to approve the lease agreement with Michael A. Torres, doing business in home primary care for rental space at 405 East Mirasoles Street, Suite F, Lopez Tijanina Complex.
Yes, sir. I know Ms. Holly has been talking to Mr. Torres. They are looking at at least some office space. This would be in the area where Pink Couture?
De Chanel.
De Chanel, the one that had the pink color. They'll be looking at moving into that place. This is the standard agreement. It's the standard rate that y'all have approved in the past.
Is this one of the units?
Yes, sir.
How many square feet is that unit? Which one is it?
189. It's a small.
It's next to where RGTV is.
It's that small one, if y'all remember, it was colored pink, the door?
Yeah. So...
I saw move, mayor.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to Item B. Discussion and possible action to approve memorandum of understanding with River Grande City CISB regarding the use of the swimming pool for the Parks and Recreation Department swimming program. Go ahead, ma'am.
Mayor Commissioners, we're looking at adding another recreational pool to our Parks and Rec Department. We are looking at doing, getting a franchise with the Dustin Goldie swimming program. It is a very popular program to teaching, swimming to young and to just about every age, but we are targeting an age of five to 13 years old. We have talked with the school district since they will not be opening the swimming pool for public use, and if possible, you know, we could work an agreement with them to use it for running the program from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. This would be from June the 8th to August the 21st. We have their, right now currently, it's being presented at the school board, so I do ask that the motion be contingent on some of the requests from the school board. We are looking at $500 a month, and this would be in lieu of utility payments and use of the facility.
And let's to let everybody, let the public know, this is only for all participating in the program, right?
Exactly. It is not open to the public. In order to use the pool, you would have to register for the program. The program are two weeks sessions, and they, it would be $25, sir. The $25 would cover the fee of the swimming pool and the lifeguard.
And it'll be two programs, the boys and girls and the Parks and Rec.
Yes, this would be incorporated into the activities of the boys and girls.
Very well. Any question?
Just a question. I know at the lifeguards, the city's going to be responsible to hiring lifeguards for this program?
Yes.
How many are we hiring?
There would be five, sir.
Five lifeguards?
Each lifeguard has five students or children that they are teaching at one time. So that's the ratio that...
Participant per lifeguard?
So that's why we don't have a number that they cannot manage. Everyone will have that amount.
Any questions, Mr. Jones? I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, and a second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Appointments and memberships, Item A. Discussion and possible action to appoint two new members to the River Grande City Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
There you have a memo from Ms. Talinta Guillen on the recommendation. We have Javier D. Jaque Margot Jr. and Mr. Dave Chachi-Jones' recommendations to the Economic Development Corporation Board. Ms. Guillen is here, you need to answer, ask any questions.
We had two members that resigned.
Yes, sir.
And these are, these are the nominations for replacement, plus those that are already in the board. So does it need to read like that in the motion, Ms. Holly?
To reappoint the existing members to start a, to start the staggering terms?
If Mayor Solichu wishes to do that.
Well, no.
The agenda item?
Because the agenda item is for the two new members, but if you want to add to the motion...
That's okay. And this is to welcome Dr. Javier D. Jaque Margot Jr. and Councilman David Chachi-Jones to the Economic Development Board. So I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move, mayor.
I have a motion, and a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action to appoint new members to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
We did have one member resign, and we had a nomination, sir, but earlier this afternoon, he called to state that he was not interested any longer, so at this time, we don't have any further recommendations, and we'd like to table this item.
Very well. Talita, do we need a...
Motion to table?
Yes.
I saw move to table the item, mayor.
Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have executive session?
I believe you can, yes.
11. I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move, as discussing executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez.
Second.
A second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, aye, same sign. Motion carries.
Aye.
I'll entertain item number nine. Adjournment.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All those, aye, same sign. This meeting has terminated, Ms. Holly, and it's 7:21.